In which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda, which I think we can point to. Correct?
Yes.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on July 19, 2021, and approval of the minutes of the tax rate and budget workshop meeting on August 9, 2021, attachment A.
What about public comments?
Do, do, do we have a, may I motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss?
The minutes.
The minutes?
Yeah, since we are going to have a, now amended to, to attachment A, we won't be having minutes, so we need to have a motion to discuss.
We have a motion.
Go second.
Second.
And our discussion is, we have a couple of typos.
Oh, forgive me, but I found that Gail's name was missing in the roll call in the minutes.
Who am I calling?
On the minutes.
Okay.
It's just, it's just forgotten on there. And the other item is that on number three, the votes are not as I remember.
They're correct.
In the amendment. In the, in the amendment. Yes. Okay, I just found this was on the city website, so. That's right.
Now, do we have a motion to vote and accept it with those corrections?
I will make that motion.
Second.
As corrected.
My roll cards, any roll call, go into roll card. Except, or say anybody object, let's put it that way, any object, do it. Don't all have passed. Good. Motion carries. Second item, or actually regular agenda, special presentation by Mr. Greg Whitaker, representing Bird City of Texas, report for this.
Gentlemen, thank you for being so nice. Sorry. Well, thank you all for having me present here. I'm actually, we're at Galveston Island Nature Tourism Council is the organization that actually sponsored the Bird City Texas application for Galveston. We were granted that certification, which is a fairly big deal. The first year that they rolled it out, there were four cities that were included. Houston played a large role in setting up the program and actually worked very closely with Texas Audubon and Texas parcel lot of left developing standards in every place. It's a community-wide certification program that is designed to kind of toot your horn on the things that you're already doing for bird-friendly communities and also challenge you as a community to kind of bring things up and improve initiatives that are designed to benefit the birds, but the saying goes, when birds thrive, so do humans. So that's what this is designed to do. Galveston has always been a very bird-friendly community. We've had a history of working with nature tourism as a, as a gen or tourism entity. We generate a lot of tourist dollars with people coming down to bird, particularly in the spring migration, but generally around. So it was a natural for us to apply for this. We applied as a geographic region for the island, Galveston Island. So we're not including Galveston County mainland, we're not including the areas that are particularly over in the eastern part of Galveston County that are already showcased very nicely by the Houston Audubon sanctuaries and all the work that happens over there. We just really wanted to kind of focus on our partners and our collaborative work that we do here in Galveston County, or in Galveston Island, I'm sorry. So obviously within that, Jamaica Beach falls on Galveston Island. So in the original application process that we put in, we did include some mention of things where Jamaica Beach kind of made sense. There are some nature viewing opportunities here. I heard mentioned in the, in the original discussion of the bird observation area down at the corner here. I think that's a, that's a major resource that Jamaica Beach has that I think fits nicely within several of the initiatives that Bird City Texas sets out there. So I really just wanted to kind of introduce the prospect of, of what's happening. We are in the first year of the three-year certification. We have some things that we have to check off as we go forward. There's a one-year report that's due coming up in December. There were no specific initiatives where we committed anything for Jamaica Beach or actually for almost anything. We just kind of said, this is what we're going to look to do the first year. And the primary areas where I saw Jamaica Beach really filling in nicely was providing a couple of nature viewing hotspots. You've already got those. The only thing we'll need to do is kind of elevate those to a hotspot level within eBird, which is the citizen science initiative out there that generates all the data. People go to a spot and look at birds and they count how many birds they see and they report that and then that generates a lot of sort of interest in going to see that area. So there's a couple of locations here within Jamaica Beach that I think would fit that bill. Some of the other initiatives where we see partnership benefits would be generating interest around planting native plants. Native plants in the environment do great things for not just the birds, but also the insect populations that feed the birds, generates a generally a healthier ecosystem overall. We saw from February that the native plants survived and thrived, whereas the beautiful ones that we planted that are exotic didn't use well. So that's one more benefit to doing it. Cats indoors is, is an initiative that American Bird Conservancy, who's one of our partners, is really pushing. There's a lot of migratory birds that fall victim to cats that are outside. We're working with the city to really kind of rein in where the feral cat colonies are being located in place so that we're not putting them in locations that are near bird sanctuaries or really bird-heavy areas. Generating awareness around responsible pesticide use so you're not polluting the watershed areas, obviously. Jamaica Beach has a lot of waterfront both sides and so that's an area where you're probably already focused on and stuff. So it's, there's, there's several areas that I think we could work together on that really. And honestly, it's just capturing the metrics. You know, you guys are doing events out here that would have nature focus to them. You're reaching people through your websites and through various curriculums that you would put together and being able to incorporate that as part of the Galveston Island bird-friendly communities, I think is what we're looking at. I kept my presentation very, very straightforward and easy because I just wanted to introduce the, the program, the Bird City Texas program. Galveston Island Nature Tourism Council has a landing page that's all based on bird-friendly communities. I think it's called Bird Friendly Galveston, real simple to find, and that has links to all of the various collaborative partners that we work with on this. We had Galveston Big Foundation, Houston Audubon. It was about seventeen different partners that we, that we used when we put this application together. So I'm here to entertain any questions and really I just wanted to get the name out there and kind of open it up for discussions going forward where you see opportunities to make the world a better place for birds, which is also better for people. You know, we're all on that. Any questions?
Greg, one of the initiatives, or please, I guess, ones within reach was signage at those locations. Would that be in like the next year? Because if we're doing budgeting and stuff, you know, we're going to want to add that into our budget lines. We want signage at those locations.
I would, I would think that that would be a, that would be a goal that we could put in the second year, I think. Identifying a couple of locations and the scope of signage would be great to have on the books for reporting for December and then moving forward. And, and our goal is to generate some dollars for the GINTC funds towards this Bird City Texas initiative so that there would be funds available to help produce that.
In, in your mind, can we do website and home, and put, make it on our website?
Yeah, we'll, we'll create links however we can to, to get people to go to the right place. We, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. Houston Audubon has a, has a huge resource with the website that they produce and a lot of the links that we've got on the GINTC website just make people to that, to that resource. We're developing lists of, you know, trees and shrubs and landscapes that are coastal friendly. You know, the Houston list is, is geared more towards the Gulf Coast, but it's more inland, so we're really trying to cater that to the shrubbery that we know is going to survive down here and, and really kind of make it our own.
Looks like we have another work scope to put together.
We'll try to make it as easy as possible and just kind of, you know, work with what you guys want to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming up.
You're welcome.
Next item is discussion of possible action to approve a resolution to name alderman Russell Ruppas as the mayor for Tim. May I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
Go second.
Go second.
Any discussions?
He's a great guy.
How about a motion to vote?
I have a, please. Now, this is the first time I've seen it actually as a vote with a, a piece of paper where it's going to be recorded. I think that's, it's insane. That's great. Thank you. I think that's great. But I'm, I'm not well educated about what a mayor pro temp does. Can someone explain the responsibility of a mayor pro temp?
Yes, ma'am. First, the, the primary is he has to act or she has to act in the place of the mayor until the mayor cannot report to a meeting. The mayor pro temp in the same respect acts as the mayor outside of many meeting issues as representative of the mayor in a meeting or she cannot make whatever function it is, whether it be a committee meeting or a, a meeting with outside government officials or, or whatever the case might be.
Okay.
And then, then obviously they still preside as with the same duties and responsibilities as a alderman or councilman.
So they would still be, retain their vote for instance?
Absolutely.
And also, in case of illness, resignation or something, don't worry from us. Does Mayor Houghton become a full mayor in their own right or would there be a special call election?
They, you'd be, they would definitely immediately fulfill the role of the mayor and then it would be up to council on how to handle a special election or how to replace that on purpose.
Okay. And this is a question, and with all due respect, is not directed at anyone personally, but what happens if there was a no vote or three votes? Three no votes?
If there were, if there was a vote knocked, then, then they would have to, someone else would have to be nominated and until someone is elected.
I see. Okay, thank you.
If no one is elected, then the mayor would have to appoint somebody.
I see. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to vote?
I'll make a motion to vote.
Go have a second.
I'll second.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Wood? Mr. Gill?
Yes.
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 This person?
Yes.
So, motion carries.
Did everybody vote?
Yes.
Also be.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. Sure.
I'll go, yeah. Good, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
You next?
You next.
And I want to take this time to thank this young man on the other end over here for doing a great job for all the years he has. This is. Item number three, discussion of possible action to approve an ordinance of the city Jamaica Beach, Texas, establishing regulations and permitting requirements for operation of long-term rental, providing a penalty for violations and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Yeah. I'll make that motion to discuss.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
This way.
First, who wrote the ordinance and who placed it on the agenda?
I put the ordinance together and I placed it on the agenda.
Well, we're the way.
Okay, thank you. And I suggested this before, but is the, can, can the name of the alderman, the alderpersons, the mayor, the city admin, or staff that puts it on the agenda, could we add those names on?
Actually, we did it. We did it.
For a while.
Yeah. I mean, we did with.
That was just, that was just, no, it was, you know, it was a thing together on Friday and I just felt to do that, I'm sorry.
I just appreciate that. Okay. That would just help us understand who it's coming from, so thank you for that. And I also have a few questions about this. Obviously, I was not in favor of the STRs, but this, this ordinance has some, some mentioning for STRs. We may need to fix that? This long-term?
It's, it's been amended.
Oh, it's.
You've got it.
Okay, again, I got my information off of the website, so is that been?
That, that has been amended here.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, you mentioned earlier, how many long-term rentals do we have in, or do, do you know how many long-term rentals we have in Jamaica Beach?
Don't have.
And what problems has the city had with long-term renters or owners that led up to this ordinance?
There's no real problems that, that were.
Okay. And how is the city planning to contact long-term rental owners about this ordinance?
We will, we'll be broadcasting on Facebook, our website, and, and through owners that we are aware.
Okay. And has the city attorney reviewed this long-term rental ordinance?
No, it hasn't.
Thank you. And have we received a ruling about the short-term rental ordinance from the city attorney yet?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. And when would this ordinance take effect?
The long-term rental ordinance?
Yes.
It will take, upon approval, it will take effect immediately, however, there is a process. It has to go to the posting period before you actually put it into full effect.
And what's that process?
It's posted and it has to be posted for ten days.
Oh, like it's.
Posted and then daily news?
Yes, yes.
And thank you. What's the process for the owners to register?
They just have to email their information.
Email.
Right.
So. Yeah, go ahead.
And both the STR and the MTR ordinance is referred to a local contact person. Is the city expecting all homeowners in Jamaica Beach to have a local contact person?
They can be the local contact person. It is, they don't have to have someone separate from themselves, it just has to be someone.
Owners can be the local.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And how is our city police department going to enforce section six?
How are they going to enforce it?
Section six and SDR or section six and MTR?
In the MTR.
Well, first off, they, like it forces it, like any other ordinance, if we got information that someone has it registered, which is basically has reported that they're a long-term rental, then we would, you know, try to contact them and get them to comply with that under section six A that you're referring to. Again, if there is reason to believe that someone hasn't given a, a long-term rental, this information is required by writing, such as hypothetical would be there's a, say a loud music disturbance at that location, they go there and they said, you know, the renter says that they had no idea that there was an ordinance in effect for, for noise. Then obviously it probably may or may not have been issued a, a written information from the owner and then so it would be falling better. It would waste the time.
I see. Thank you. And if the city requires one group of homeowners, or now two groups of homeowners, short-term or long-term owners, to inform guests about section six and both ordinances, are we going to require every homeowner to inform every guest in writing about the ninety items listed in section six?
No.
Thank you. Letter G in definitions mentions an email letter from an owner to register plus a return email or letter from the city authorizing permission. Wouldn't this need to be addressed in the body of the ordinance too?
No.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments from constituents. This is from a constituent. I'm requesting that you ask the honorable mayor at the meeting why long-term rental owners will not be charged a fee for the same basic service of registration as a short-term renter?
I wouldn't, because there's not near as many. I mean.
But, but he said that you don't know how many they are, there, there are.
Well, I think logic can tell you that there's not two hundred and fifty-some odd members. It's not going to take weeks to, to register.
Well, we could definitely add that if you would like.
No, thank you.
If that's a very point.
No, thank you. What's the penalty if a local contact doesn't respond? If you call a, a contact person? What's, is there a penalty if they don't respond?
There's, there's not a restriction to beg for response within sixty minutes. So there's no restriction on it.
Okay. These, these are from other people, not me. If a person has family, friends, or hires a person to be caretaker or security for their home, then they're not paying rent, is that also considered a long-term rental and it doesn't require registration?
I'm sorry, I don't really understand that question.
If a owner has fa, a family, friend, or hires a person to be caretaker and security for their home, but they're not paying rent, is that also considered a long-term rental and does that require a registration?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
If they're not paying rent, then they're not renting the home.
Another question. If the person has a long-term roommate or life partner who shares expenses, is that considered a long-term rental since the owner lives in the home too?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And if another, another constituent, if my long-term renter violates an ordinance, who receives the, in, in this, sorry, if my long-term renter violates any ordinance, any rule in this ordinance, who receives the penalty?
Whoever would be in violation of the ordinance.
Thank you. And, and this will be available on the city website?
Yes, ma'am.
A comment and, and I have a letter from, I have permission to share this. This is not my letter, but this is a letter from Jay Patrick Sutton, who is, who won the Texas Supreme Court ruling, Harvard versus Timberwood. It's from January twenty, two thousand twenty, mayor's aware of it, and addressed to, to see Spicer, Spicer and the city council. And it was delivered by legal courier. I'm going to refer to three quotes in this. The violation of equal protection is a law that makes a distinction between similarly situated persons, but the distinction bears no relation to the purported objection of the law. Then the law violates the rights to equal protection under laws under the Texas and U.S. Constitution. Also, the intertwined rights to lease out one's property and two, to decide what, who shall use the property and for how long are fundamental to liberty, travel, and privacy. Also, the city should continue enforcing the rules that are already on the books instead of invading settled property rights. That's the end of his letter. We already have ordinances to enforce regulations and these ordinance, ordinances should be enforced equally and fairly to everyone in the city and not target a certain group or two groups of homeowners by charging a fee to short-term rental owners for registration, but not to long-term rental registration is again, just violates equal protection under the laws and I believe is unconstitutional. We have many homes, we have many homeowners who have second homes in Jamaica Beach and do not lease their, rent their homes, but these two ordinances invade all homeowners' settled property rights. The Fourteenth Amendment mandates that individuals in similar situations be treated equally by the law. The council's had three days to review this ordinance. I don't think it's enough time, but I did my best to, to do my research, but I believe again that this will open the city up for litigation and I don't want to be part of this. I don't want to be sued. I will vote, I will not vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Susan, from me a couple paragraphs ago, that this makes it a good thing to do because you, you said in your letter that came from Sutton?
Jay Patrick Sutton.
Yeah, that you can't treat them differently and this would be making them treated.
But you're making three separate groups, regular homeowners, and then you're making long-term renter owners and then short-term renter owners. So you're making a division of three different groups and you're not treating them all the same. And that's better.
So how do they rule on hotel taxes?
Hotel taxes is a better, it is a state law, but, and that doesn't have anything to do with.
But that's, that's still separating them. I mean, I, I hear a little contradiction from these saying.
I think it's the place in taxes.
Because it's saying you can't charge, if you, if you're having a separation, then you couldn't charge hotel taxes, but that's been proven that you can't.
Yes, that's true. That, and that's a valid point, but that doesn't separate the, that doesn't cover the violation of equal protection.
Susan.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's some fine points, Alden. Our city attorney recommended that we have a long-term rental ordinance addressing Mr. Sutton's issue, advising that that would take any grounds away from Mr. Sutton being a authority type claim against a short-term rental ordinance. Additionally, there is a distinction between renters' short-term and renters' long-term. First, as these agencies have suggested, there are a lot of long-term renters that are actually short-term renting. This helps identify any short-term rental that's acting under the guise of being a long-term rental, such as there were several addresses that were pointed out as only renting thirty days or more, which makes it a long-term rental. However, they're booked by different people every week. So again, that would be operating under the guise of a long-term rental and not paying hot tax, so therefore that is another distinction of why we need to know every rent house here. Not to mention, as a public service in community policing, it's always good to know when you have folks that are new to the community. As you're well aware, a long-term rental, they, those folks come and go a little bit more frequently than the homeowners go, come and go. So it's a, it's a good way for the police, the fire, EMS to understand this, a new family here and, and the police are reaching out to everyone that we know of that's new to the community and just welcome there and just sort of an outreach from the police department. So there is a distinction when you're paying hot tax and when you're not paying hot tax. And so this is where there is variations in the two. So as you well know, to, in order to collect proper hot tax and identify folks who should be paying hot tax, then. then a long-term rental ordinance is is not a bad idea.
I I read that when I saw this and it came through. That's what I read into it and I think there was a need to make a distinction. There were reasons that you set up. As far as some of these regalities that you're referencing, I I really want to get into that and better understand it because I'm just interested in that type of thing. But my gut feeling is that basically, uh, the groups are going to be treated.
Um, I again probably would not vote for an unapproved ordinance to a lawyer, um, just because I'm worried about that lifetime and something happening for suing.
Well, it's not implemented until, like, he gets a.
This, this, if if it's approved, it always goes to the city attorney first before the post.
Before the posting.
Yes, before the post.
Excuse me, Brad, did you say that our city attorney asked for this? Yes, he did.
So, but as a, and content-wise, I live this every single day. I don't have short-term rentals by me, I have long-term rentals. John and I talk pretty regularly about one that I call the cops on every single week and we've been trying to get ahold of the owner. And they're not enjoying returning our calls as like a safety perspective. We've had so many issues with this place and there's no way for us to contact them. I mean, I don't know that that is necessarily, that's not my role, but it would be nice for the city to have that, probably for John to have that to say, hey, we've made six calls out to this house in the last six weeks. Have you guys been here to see the shambles it's in? Um, but again, uh, I do think fair is fair for if we're doing a short-term rental, long-term rental, but, context-wise, it looks pretty basic to me.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we wouldn't post it and make it official till it's reviewed.
Okay. And then it would come back to us if the lawyer had any.
Correct, yes, correct.
The, the reason we do that is because we don't, we're not, we're not paying attorney's fees to review a document that's never approved.
Yeah.
So.
That other ones that I swore they were always through the attorney before they came to us.
Well, we we've overspent on attorney's fees on the city a lot, so we're trying to reduce them.
Thank you for that clarification.
Do I have a motion to vote?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Like a roll call vote and Mr. Wood?
I will for it.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, city administrators report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this, uh, very brief. I know we've had a long meeting and I appreciate, um, all of your hard work going into the budget process. Obviously, this has, uh, been a tough year for all of us and you guys have been doing outstanding in reporting back these issues so we can get the budgetary, uh, stuff straight and and approved by the end of September. Um, I wanted to announce, I don't want to make it official official announcement, but, um, FEMA, through the President's directives, uh, created American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. And that's basically, uh, it's taken, uh, where where CARES Act stopped the, this plan's sport, uh, to to actually fund, um, these, these type of, uh, issues that that it qualifies for this was the state of Texas through Keenum actually has a granting process so a city can apply for a grant for a lot of different kind of funds, for not only the city, but also for, uh, businesses in the cities, even some individuals. Um, we, uh, it took a lot of time to 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 put together the the data needed to file for the grant, but we did file for the grant and we were approved, uh, for amount of, somewhere it's going to be between two hundred and two thousand and two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the city would be administering the grant. Uh, we would get half of the money. Once it gets final approval, we get half of the money immediately, another half of the money in a year from now. And the city can set up some relief, um, through this granting process uh, for folks that that were affected, um, by the, the coronavirus, such as businesses that had to shut down or temporarily shut down. They could actually apply for relief grants through the city and the city would be the one issuing them grants through anyone who qualifies, obviously, by the restrictions of the program. So the great thing is, guys, we got approved for about two hundred to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar grant. We're about ninety-five percent sure that we will be getting funding for that. They're still, uh, still processing data for them. And so hopefully, by the next city council meeting, we'll have some great news in that, uh, we can start formulating, uh, a lot of information to get out there to the public for some, uh, different areas of public. That's all I have for for today.
Uh, I just want a mayor's report now. Uh. Pause a second and we've had two community members here past the last few weeks, John McCaskill and, uh, yesterday Wolf Pats. Uh, I'd like to give best regards to to the families. Give her condolences. Uh, it's always hard, I hate having to deal with that, but our thoughts and prayers are with you guys. Other than that, I know our meetings run longer than than they used to. I I believe in long discussions, I believe in hearing everybody's concerns and regardless of what anyone may think, it is a very good thing. Uh. First, the meeting of the month, of course, is is our workshop meeting. This meeting is to exchange ideas and solutions, uh, between citizens, staff, council. And, uh, the second meeting, of course, is our voting meeting on on any typical month. Uh. We will be, uh, even though here the last couple, well, this meeting, last meeting, and probably the next couple with all the budgetary stuff, there's going to be some special circumstances, but once we get to move in, that's the way it will be. Other than that, um, I, Brian and I have talked a lot about what he was just talking about and, uh, looking forward to sharing that with some of our business, uh, businesses here in community. I think it's going to be a very positive thing for them. And, uh, but we will, until we know for sure, we won't be presenting it to, you know, just the other way around. Uh, aldermen's reports, uh, Ms. Morrison?
Um, I don't have too much. I did see on social media, which is not, obviously, our preferred form of contact, but that some citizens were requiring about having the pool open later. So I was going to get in touch with, uh, later in the season, not later hours in the day, because I say it's getting shorter. Um, but I will be getting in touch with Georgia to see, uh, if that's possible at all. So I will hopefully have an update. Um. There will be an update before the next meeting because otherwise I could be closed before the next meeting. So, uh, stay tuned.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you. Um, I attended and recorded the annual JVIC meeting, thank you, John, and stayed for their, um, July board meeting. Mayor Clay Morris was the special speaker. It was well-attended and had more than twenty people in the audience. Sadly, I was the only one who stayed for the board meeting, but I found that the most fascinating part. It was informative and transparent. Eleanor Summer Bloom has stepped down and they need now two volunteers to fill the board member seats. Um, I, the video was shared in the Jamaica Beach reporters group. One interesting thing I wanted to mention as I learned from JVIC is that our city has fifteen hundred and forty properties now, or homes.
Properties.
Properties, thank you.
Can I get them on?
Um, last week, Mayor Morris asked me also to look into the SOPs. I learned a lot. Um, I connected with Alderman Refertus and he shared his notes with with me. I returned those notes and for former Alderman Terry Rizzo also shared her notes. Both spent considerable time on updating the new employee handbook. As I understand it, John Wright's original intent to the policy handbook was to include procedures or follow-up from to the city policies. Mr. Hyman's version is short and simple, but offers little for a new employee to understand procedures and their rights as city employee. One item, for instance, this version does not mention HECA nor the Texas Medical Privacy Act that protects their medical records act, me- medical record rights. I've made several suggestions, need mount them to the mayor and to to Mr. Hyman. I agree with Alderman Refertus and Terry Rizzo that procedures should be addressed. I believe more research and discussion needs to be done to complete this task. That's all.
Mr. Wood?
I don't have anything to report, just me.
That's right, I'm spayed.
Okay, uh, police report.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Uh, I'll try to make this very quickly. Uh, I think y'all have maybe have copies of them already. July's twenty twenty, uh, one police status report. Uh, the projects, we've already kind of talked about, granting opportunities, we're always looking for those for any type of items. Uh, we're working, I was working with, uh, Brad in, uh, the twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Um, the planning and, uh, research for the Lake City Consortium software. We have a new meeting with the, uh, grid chiefs, uh, which is the Lake City Consortium scheduled for nine fifteen. Uh, that's going to be discussing, uh, which vendor that they're talking about using, what consortium the software, and will we be able to find more out about our costs that's going to be associated with the consortium. Uh, police activity in July, we had three new cases. A, two of them were traffic accidents, basically, informational only. One of them was a damaged property, which was found by one of our officers on the beach. Simon vandalized, he was able to take care of it, but we didn't make that good. Uh, personnel, uh, issues and information. We had two officers out for a period of time with COVID. Both officers are now back to duty. Um, Officer Sanford was given a commendation for going above and above the call assisting residents on the beach. Uh, it was posted out on Facebook, the the residents were having a wedding on the beach and Officer Sanford was very, very accommodating and helpful to make their experience very, uh, memorable and, uh, pleasant. So, uh, we did give him a commendation for that. Officer Posey was also given a commendation for assistance with a guest on the beach that was in medical distress. Um, the beach patrol, uh, we continue to be very successful, very present, uh, which is being noticed by our guests and residents. Uh, we're getting a lot of good feedback, uh, on how we're doing. We are always trying to make, you know, tweaks and tunes, uh, to our things as we can. Traffic enforcement, our officers in the month of July wrote, uh, one hundred and nine citations, uh, doing traffic enforcement. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to go further, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Meeting adjourned.